Go then, manager, I'll turn it over to you for the for the for the COVID briefing. I would like to again thank Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden. We watch on the news all over the country, numbers continue to rise. There are parts of our state that are still dealing with real grave circumstances. Generally speaking, our numbers are generally rising. We don't know a lot what happened with November, where things have plateaued. Don't know if that's because it's real or if it's because people just don't like to go to the hospitals over Thanksgiving. But you guys are very vigilant and diligent in helping this community. And relative to other cities, Austin continues to do well, which I think is a real tribute to the community itself. You know, the it's not really how much we can enforce, it's not even the orders that we issue. It's a community that is seeing the numbers and the data and then responding to it in a responsible way. And I think that is a is a community where we're fortunate to have so many people pulling in the same direction to keep us safe. With that, manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and it's good to see everyone. I hope everyone had a restful Thanksgiving holiday weekend. It's hard to believe that we're already in December, but as the mayor noted, we are still in the middle of a pandemic and we have both a responsive community and incredible staff that are working with our partners to make sure that we are informed and that we're really leaning into this in ways that allow us to stay safe so we can get through this as quickly as possible. We're going to start with Director Hayden, she's going to turn it over to Dr. Esq. and then we'll pause for questions. Director Hayden? You're still muted, Director Hayden.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here today. I want to start my update by encouraging all individuals that may have traveled outside of Austin and Travis County to self quarantine when they return every seven to 14 days. And we are really encouraging this type of behavior because if you may have had any close contact with someone that may be infected with COVID-19, we also encourage you to reach out, go online to our assessment and schedule an appointment to take a test at one of our sites. And we want you to do this especially if you, you know, have a student that is will likely go back to in-person school or you have a position where you are where you will be in person, you know, at your job. And so this is something that that we have encouraged our our school districts and childcare, but we are also encouraging others to do this. We just want everyone to be proactive. The other thing, we are going to partner with AISD this week and Wednesday through Friday of this week, we're going to be at Burger Center and Northeast High School to to test the families. As you all may know, they are on virtual learning this week. And so our goal is to ultimately mitigate the the spread of disease. The other thing that I want to talk about is is that with all of the holiday gatherings and just all of the things that are going on, we are going to continue to provide a a low risk, a high and a high risk type of information to you when you are making decisions. Our hope is is that you will choose to take the lower risk. It is going to be important that you take the lower risk because that is going to help us as a community as we're moving forward during this time. The other thing that I want to share is is we're going to continue to work with the schools and provide the testing with them, but we're also going to continue to provide the technical assistance. The other thing, our epidemiologists and our surveillance team, we are starting to see, as you can imagine, because there's so many folks that are testing, we did see an increase. And as you all know, we're at stage four. And so since we are at stage four, we are encouraging folks to only take essential trips only. We want you to really just make the best decisions that you can make. The other update I want to talk about is is we talked about our Vaccine Coalition Distribution Task Force. We've had three meetings of that group. And just a reminder, it is a group of healthcare officials as well as government folks, advocates, nonprofit folks. And we are putting together a plan for our community. And so with that group, we are going to be making a slight bit of a change. We've had about 138 folks that have have that are active in that process. And so we're going to split, we're going to change our format into smaller groups. And so with the smaller groups, we're going to work on priority population engagement. We're going to look at our communication strategy. And then we're going to work with our vaccine providers to just make sure with with the throughput, just making sure with with all the phases we have coming up. And so the phases that we have with the distribution is based upon the phases, based upon the information we've received from the Texas Department of State Health Services, and it's also based upon information for the Centers for Disease Control. And so we are waiting, just like everyone else is, for December, later this month, December. And our hope is is that the first group of folks will receive their vaccine later this month. The other thing about the vaccine, we have heard from Department of State Health Services that we have, they have an agreement with Pfizer. And so we are aware that Pfizer is going to be one of the vaccines that will come to the state of Texas. And so as we get more information, our plan is to be as transparent as we can be because we want to make sure that the public has as much information as they can that as we can provide because we want to be able to ensure the the trust of the community. And so as you may realize that our testing has been up significantly just for the months of November, we have tested over 57,000 people as of November 24. And so all of our sites continue to remain open, our Dove Springs site, Givens, Montopolas, Walnut Creek, and Fugerville sites are open. And then we still have our our St. John's site. I'm going to shift to long term, long-term care incident management team update. Over the last two weeks, there has been about 71 new cases in the last two two weeks. We are definitely concerned about that. Our team continues to to meet with each of the individuals, have their weekly meeting and discuss how our epidemiologists can work with them very closely on any of their, any of their plans that they have. One of the things that we are starting to see is is we're starting to see an increase for PPE. Over 274 orders have been recently put in place over the last couple of weeks. As I reported at my last update, I shared with you that we were going to partner with the facilities that would be willing to provide a take-home kit for their staff. We are in the process of of completing that process. Our staff will be working on a drive-through pickup event on December 12th, and we're going to provide 2,000 kits to the employees of those facilities where the facilities have signed up to say they will will share this with their employees. We continue to provide testing at those locations as we are, as they request us to. Most of them have the infrastructure in place. And then lastly, as you all know, we are going to continue with our enforcement efforts. The department has had several meetings with our colleagues over at the code compliance, Austin Code, as well as the Fire Marshal's Office. Our staff were very, did some sweeps last week over the over the Thanksgiving holiday, and we will continue to do that. Our goal is is to, we have moved past warnings, we are moving at a pace of enforcement and issuing citations. So we will continue to provide updates about that as we move along. At this point, I will transition over to Dr. Esq. Dr. Esq.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good morning, Mayor and Council. If I can ask AV to pull up my slides, we'll get started. All right. Next slide, please. So, Mayor and Council, this is an update of our new confirmed cases in Travis County. Yesterday, we reported 332 new cases with a moving average of 231. That's a decrease over the past six days. As as Mayor Adler mentioned in his opening comments, we're not clear if this is going to be a sustained trend or not. We know that, you know, leading up to Thanksgiving, we had a lot of people getting tested. As Thanksgiving week started, less people showed up for testing and wanted to get tested. We always see this in the hospitals as well in terms of of people desiring to go to the hospital during holidays. Sometimes people will put off going and seeking care, seeking testing, seeking treatment until after the holiday. So this week should be very telling for us to determine if if this trend will continue or not. But again, we are flattening things. We did flatten things last week, and we hope that trend continues. Next slide, please. Similarly, our new admissions have been decreasing. Yesterday, we reported 35 new admissions to the hospital with a moving average of 32. That number has been moving between 32 and 37 over the past 14 days. So again, we're hopeful that this trend continues, that this is this is a response to the warnings that things were getting worse locally and around the state and country. And again, we can continue this trend by continuing those protective actions that are leading to these improved numbers. Next slide, please. This slide is showing us three things. The blue line is the total hospital beds being utilized for COVID-19 patients in the five-county MSA. The orange is the ICU beds, the gray or the ventilators being utilized. Hospitalizations yesterday were reported at 218 with a moving average of 219. That has been flat over the past six days. ICU yesterday, 75 ICU beds being utilized with a moving average of 76, also flat over the past week. And ventilator used yesterday, 46 with a moving average of 45, and again, flat over the past week. So again, we, two weeks ago, started calling on our Austin and Travis County community to work harder to flatten the curve. Things are flattening, but we'll have to be patient, we'll have to continue those increased efforts to to mitigate the spread of disease, and hopefully this trend will continue over the next couple of weeks. Obviously, we are very concerned about travel and social interactions over the Thanksgiving holiday, and we're hopeful that that people heeded the warnings, not only from Austin Public Health, but from the CDC and the state as well, and we're protective. As Director Hayden said, it's important if folks decided to go to, you know, large family gatherings or social gatherings or were involved in activities where distancing and masking were not followed, to stay home this week, to get tested later this week, to ensure that that they were not exposed and and are able to transmit disease before they go back to school or to work. Next slide, please. So, Mayor and Council, what I'm showing you here is the updated projections from the UT Model and Consortium. And again, what this is showing is decreasing activity in terms of our admissions to the hospital. And as you can see, over the next several weeks, the projections are improving. Similar to what we showed last week and the week before, this is with the assumption that disease transmission stays the way it has been over the past week or so. So if we loosen things up, if we are relaxed, if we are less vigilant in those protections, this will move in a different direction. Again, I'm also concerned that these projections may be overly optimistic because of the fact that less people were tested last week and less people, you know, may have been inclined to go to the hospital to seek care during the holiday season. So again, we'll continue to watch these numbers this week and into next week, and hopefully the trend will continue. And we will see this as as our actual trend going forward here in Travis County. Next slide, please. Again, we see similar effects on total hospitalizations. You see some flattening for another week or so, and then a decline in in those hospitalizations projected now. Next slide, please. And again, this is the ICU projections. That stays flat for a bit longer because individuals who are in the ICU tend to be there for for a longer period of time, and you can see a more gradual decline in those ICU numbers over the next several weeks going into Christmas. Again, I want to encourage folks to increase, increase their vigilance, continue those protective actions that that we called upon folks to do over the past couple of weeks. And if that happens, if that continues, then Christmas is going to look a whole lot better. So our hope is that those trends will continue. Next slide, please. Mayor and Council, this is an update of a slide I showed you a couple of weeks ago in terms of cases per capita. So these are active cases per 100,000 population in the major metropolitan areas across Texas. This is based on DSHS data, which is published and updated weekly on their website. You can see that, again, Travis County's in this dark blue at the very bottom of the graph, and you can see that we've flattened out a little bit over the past week. We had an incline over the past over a two-week period or so, and then a flattening. We've been flat for about the last 10 days, with today being a moving average of, or correction, active cases for 100,000 of 186. Our next closest city or county is Bear County in San Antonio, which is roughly double our active case rate. You can see that that Houston had a change in their reporting, which dropped dropped them closer to San Antonio's trend. The dancing green and orange lines that you see are Tarrant and Dallas Counties, which have had a more substantial upward trend. They are flattening out a little bit also over the past week. The light blue line is Lubbock County, still on an incline, with close to 2,000 cases per 100,000. And of course, El Paso County at the very top with over 5,000 active cases per 100,000. You can see that they have had a shift in their in the slope of of their increase, which is flattening out a bit, which is certainly good news for them, still facing catastrophic surge in El Paso County. So again, this is not just a theoretical threat, we can see it happening around the state of Texas, and it's important that that we continue those efforts here so that we can continue our our trend at the bottom of of the the cases per capita in the major metro areas in Texas. Next slide, please. This is an update of the cases by age group. So these are our individuals hospitalized over the past week. You can see that the sort of mustard or mustard yellow is our 70-79 age group, which are our highest group hospitalized, followed by our 60-69, relatively flat over the past two weeks. The yellow line that you see here is our 20-29 age group. They have had a decrease over the past several weeks. Again, we, I'll note that UT has gone virtual for the remainder of the semester, which should help to to further decrease the trends in transmission and hospitalization in that 20-29 age group. The gray line is our 10-19 age group, a slight increase over the past couple of weeks, but but nothing dramatic, and certainly decreases in our our younger age groups. We are seeing disease transmission in younger age groups. We are seeing some hospitalizations, but again, we're fortunate that we have not seen substantial numbers of hospitalizations associated with with young children. Next slide, please. This is the same data, but broken down and quantified by each of the age groups. You can see that that two weeks ago, we had 215 individuals hospitalized in the MSA from COVID-19. Last week, 185, so a significant decrease in in hospitalizations, which is exactly the direction that we want to see. We've seen decreases in our numbers of older individuals in that 70-79, our 80-plus age group, and relatively steady in some of the other age groups. So again, we'll continue to watch these numbers and report them weekly. Next slide, please. This is an update of our hospitalizations by race and ethnicity. The the green line that you see here is our Latinx population. They represent 38.7% of hospitalizations last week. So our our white, non-Hispanic, and the blue has surpassed our Latinx population in terms of hospitalizations over the past couple of weeks. Our African-American community, 8.9%. So both both communities now a more accurate representation of their their composition of our our community in terms of hospitalizations. We did see a a change in our non-Hispanic population, also decrease in that other category, and our orange category, which is our Asian-American, 5.7%. So further increases this week in terms of hospitalizations of our Asian-American population. Again, these are updated and also located on our dashboard for folks to reference. Next slide, please. Again, similarly, this is the same data broken down and quantified by each of the races and ethnicities. 65 in our Latinx community, 15 in our African-Americans, 79 in our white, non-Hispanic community. So again, total numbers decreasing in terms of hospitalizations, and we'll continue to to report on this weekly as well. Next slide, please. Mayor and Council, this is an update of our positivity by week. So three weeks ago, we were at 6.8%. Two weeks ago, we dropped to 5.9%. Last week, and again, we still have lots of tests coming in from last week, but so far, back to 6.8% for last week. So again, this number may change significantly. When we looked at this number yesterday, it was down at 5.4%, but each day, you know, thousands more test results come in, and so this number may change. But again, we we have more work to do. Remember that we want us to be below 3% across the board, and we are more than double that still. So we have more work to do, but through that increased vigilance, through people choosing to stay home when they're sick or have symptoms of any kind, and certainly through folks who are positive, isolating and preventing household spread is going to be very important for us to further decrease this positivity. Next slide, please. This is the same data feed that is broken down by race and ethnicity. You can see that that we have our Latinx population in the dark gray at 10.3% so far for last week, week 48. Our American Indian population in Native Alaskan, 13.3%, which is the blue line on the left. African-American, which is our, the gray bar, 7.6%. Asian-American, which is the gold, is 5.7%. And our white, non-Hispanic on the right side at 6%. So again, all of the races and ethnicities above that 5% mark and and well above the 3% goal that we've set. So again, more work to do in terms of of decreasing transmission in our community. Next slide, please. This is the same breakdown by age group. You can see that that we're seeing increases in our positivity in our 40-49, 50-59, 60-69 age group, as well as our our 70 and 80-plus age groups. These are, these are the groups that we don't want to see increases, particularly because increases in the older age groups are going to result in increasing hospitalizations. This is part of the reason why we have concern about what's going to happen this week. Anytime we see those increases in the older age groups, we can expect a week later, two weeks later, to see increases in hospitalizations. So again, we don't want to be too optimistic, given given what we're seeing here. Next slide, please. As Director Hayden mentioned, this is an update of our dashboard. As a reminder, this is on our website, austin texas.gov/covid19 under dashboards. 71 over the past two weeks, 146 over the past 28 days. And again, we continue to work with our nursing homes, looking at opportunities to improve their efforts at infection control, including PPE consultation and testing. Next slide, please. This is an update of our our schools report. I apologize for the slide being cut off on the right, but obviously, a decrease last week with most schools being out for the week, a total of about 70 cases between students, faculty, staff, and other visitors to campus. So again, we've we've we have AISD remote this week. We have some schools that have elected to also go virtual this week to help decrease the the risk of further spread at schools. We will continue to report on this weekly. And again, as a reminder, each of the school districts have a more detailed report by school located on on their individual websites. There are links to those through austin texas.gov/covid19 for folks who want more information on that. Next slide, please. And again, Mayor and Council, in addition to COVID-19 season, we're in the middle of of influenza season. Last week, 456 flu tests were performed, zero were positive, which gives us a 0% positivity for last week, which is is great news. Overall, 27 cases reported, 0.98% positivity. So folks are doing good. Again, as a reminder, for anybody out there who has not received a flu shot this year, it's not too late to do that, please do that now. But again, we're seeing, we're seeing ongoing trends of of very, very low influenza transmission, which is good because we don't have enough hospital capacity to manage surges of both. Next slide, please. This is a a graph showing how this year's is compared to the previous three seasons. Again, we are extremely low in terms of influenza-like illnesses in our syndromeary surveillance data that comes into us. So again, very pleased with So again, very pleased with this, and we really do need to continue this trend, and hopefully, folks will get out there and get their flu shot. The masking, the distancing is going to help with influenza as well. Next slide, please. Finally, Mayor and Council, we continue to be in stage four. Again, that moving average of new cases, which is our key indicator for transition, is at 32. The threshold between stage three and stage four is 30. If we can continue those efforts, continue that vigilance in our masking, our distancing, and our hand hygiene, if we continue to stay home when we're ill, get tested when we're concerned, we can push this back into the yellow zone, which will certainly allow us to relax a little bit and to certainly have a better lead up to Christmas and New Year's. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Spencer.
Thank you, Dr. S. Scott. And now we'll turn it back to Mayor and Council for questions for Dr. S. Scott, Director Hayden, and any of the staff that are also on the line on this pandemic.
Dr. S. Scott, on that slide that you just had up, the color-coded risk chart slide, you used to have a column on the left-hand side that showed the triggers. That was a helpful line and column, I think, to have for the community. We were in yellow, and when we went to 30, that moved us into the orange zone. Is that right, the stage-four zone?
That's correct, Mayor.
And then the number to move us into stage five, and obviously, you make a judgment at that point based on the speed and other factors, but 50 is the trigger that takes us into stage five generally. Is that right?
That's correct. And next week, I can, we have two versions, one with and one without those triggers. I'll certainly make sure to share the one next week with the triggers.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And the numbers that we're at right now for the seven-day running average is 32. We had gotten up to like 37 or 38 or something like that, and come back down with either the good news last week because we were wearing masks and responding to orange, or people just weren't going to the hospital over Thanksgiving so they could spend more time with their families. But that's the number that we're trying to stay below as a community at 50, because that gives us the best chance to keep businesses open and keep schools open. I get asked the question now if we're contemplating or looking at the kind of curfew that El Paso has put in, and even San Antonio has put in, where I'm not sure, I think it's like 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock at night, and it is mainly intended to get people home from social events earlier, still allows people to travel for essential kinds of things, but has people going home earlier. We haven't done that yet, a curfew like that. Is that something that could be in our future? How would you address the concept of curfew?
Yeah, Mayor, right now, I don't think it's necessary because we're in a different situation, and you can see, and I think the public can see clearly, that there are different situations going on in the jurisdictions across Texas. So there's a lot of heterogeneity in terms of what's happening now. I think right now, people are listening, and we've been very fortunate throughout this pandemic that our community has responded every time to that call to action. I think if we get to stage five, that we do need to consider other steps, including a curfew, to help curb this spread further.
Okay. And then my last question, then I'll turn it over to my colleagues if they have questions. On the chart that you had just prior to this one, that had the flu-influenza chart, there's kind of a baseline at about 1% that we hit, and we've stayed there relative to past years where the numbers increased. And where that flu is important is that, you know, this whole thing with the virus is not all about who gets it and whether they get sick and whether they die or whether they go in the hospital. I hear so many people talk about, "I'm not going to wear a mask because I'm willing to take the risk with my own health." And that's just not it. I mean, it is not accurate or fair or truthful to assess whether or not you should be putting on a mask based on whether or not you're willing to assume that risk for yourself. We have a real problem in this city if so many people get sick that go to a hospital that impact our ICUs, not just for COVID, but for somebody who might be in a car accident or have a heart attack. We need to keep people out of the hospital so that there's space for those kinds of patients. And to a large degree, that's what wearing masks are about, keeping space in the ICUs for all the things that are going to happen. One of the things we identified early in the community was, we filled up our hospitals last year on influenza patients. So if we were going to have a fighting chance of keeping the space we needed in ICUs, we needed not to have a lot of people with flu going in. And it looks like the community is doing a really, really good job of that. Do you know how other cities are also doing with respect to influenza? Are they seeing the same kind of pattern that we're seeing? You know?
Mayor, we're certainly, I have the statewide data, and we're certainly seeing favorable trends across the state in terms of influenza this year as compared to other years. But I'll say and emphasize the importance of mask-wearing. It is helping us. I think that we can see that in the COVID-19 data, we can see that in the influenza data. And you're right to point out, it's not about how much risk you would want to personally take. It's about having respect for life and how fragile it can be for other people. And, you know, I think this is a time when we have the opportunity, through a simple action, to protect others in this community. And it is not asking a lot, to put on a mask, to keep your distance from other people. And, you know, we can all be heroes. We can all be lifesavers by doing that simple act, and I would certainly encourage folks to do that.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, anybody have a question?
Natasha. Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Director Hayden, actually. During the conversation around PPE, I've actually had a lot of constituents have questions about PPE for multifamily residences, especially those income-restricted multifamily. So with the PPE of stability, I have some questions around that. And then, like, as far as the requests that you all are receiving, where's the need? You know, who is it and where are they, the people that are asking? I think you're muted, Director Hayden.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you. We are receiving requests from several entities. We are working very closely with community groups, and they are providing, they are providing the equipment out in like the rural areas, like the Travis County areas, but they are also providing it in other zip codes that have a higher positivity rate. We are receiving requests from childcare facilities, long-term care facilities. We've also received some requests from Housing Authority, as well as, and I'm going by memory, and we've also received some requests from nonprofits that the city has contracts with and membership of One Voice. And so we've been able to provide that as we can. Whenever community groups are having an event in the community, we do limit it to 1,000 total of what we can provide, only because we are providing it across our community.
Thank you. That's helpful. I think I'll connect with you offline to sort of figure out how we can really fortify that partnership with HACA and the Travis County Housing Authority. Yeah, like I said, I'm getting a lot of questions about that. So you said, an APH event that's on 1212, the 2,000 kids that y'all are going to give with the drive-through, is there a specific place that people should go to find out about the details of it? Or do you have a flyer that we could share on the socials and with our constituents and our newsletter, maybe?
I think what would be better is that we, because those are for folks that are working in long-term care facilities only. And so what we have done is, is that we've shared that with all of the long-term care facility partners that our team meet with weekly. We have a mailbox address that's set up, long-term care, at austin texas.gov, so they can send an email to that, or they can call our medical line, or 311, maybe just easier for folks to call and say, you know, "Please connect me to the Austin Public Health Medical Line," and we'll get them connected.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think the last question I have around PPE is just recognizing how we had to scramble the last time, you know, the first time, rather. I just wonder if we are better positioned this time around than we were before in terms of availability and access to? And yeah, I guess I'm just curious about how we're positioned, and if we're not, you know, at a place, do we have plans to really support that effort more substantively?
What we are working on now is we're working on a plan that will take us from January through September of next year, where we will, we've asked our partners, you know, "How many events do you think you are going to have?" So we can plan for that. We, at all of our sites and at the city and county sites, we actually provide, like, neighborhood centers, we provide PPE to our clients, and then the community center and for Travis County, they provide PPE. So all of us are planning for next year about how much PPE we will need, and we're going to order that. And, you know, Travis County has been very gracious to allow us to store it there. So we will continue to work with them to store our PPE collaboratively with the county out at the expo.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good morning. My question may be for Ms. Franco. I don't know if she's on the line, but I understand that the last we had heard, there was about $5 billion at the state level left in CARES money. In my correspondence with Bree, I understand that we believe there's somewhere between 1.5 and 3.7 billion that's left unspent. Do we have any sense of what the plan is from the governor's office for those funds, which need to be spent by December 31st? And at a time when, you know, we have desperate needs, whether it's for PPE, to get food on the table for people, to pay rent, to keep our businesses, our vital industries alive? I'm really frustrated that the governor is just sitting on that money. Do we have any sense of the next steps on that and the plans? And I don't know who of staff can answer that, if there is an answer.
Yeah, Councilmember, Director Franco is not on the line, so if she can't answer that directly, I'll see if our health experts have any updates from their departments that they work with at the state, but at a minimum, we'll get you a responsive memo form regarding any updates that we have from the state on the use of those funds.
Thank you, because I think the public needs to understand that, you know, Governor Abbott has these resources. We have a deadline of December 31st, and we need to spend that money before we have to give it back to Washington. We need to spend it wisely and what our community needs.
Thank you. Colleagues, anybody else have anything for Director Hayden, Dr. S. Scott, Greg?
It is, it's important to see, I mean, it's alarming to see the numbers in places like El Paso and Lubbock, of course, and the image done there. It is useful to see how our communities responded to keep our number, although too high relatively low. So I had not seen that graph before, so thank you for sharing it, Dr. S. Scott. With the flattening that we saw in the last few days, that we're not sure whether it happens because it's a real flattening or because people stayed home during the holiday or didn't go to the hospital during the holiday, is there a similar trend of that happening in other Texas cities or not? Where they don't know whether there was a flattening because people didn't go to the hospital?
Yes, Councilmember, most of the jurisdictions saw some flattening over the past week. And I think there's been some comments from CDC and Dr. Fauci on the challenge with data over the holiday week. So again, I think that we have to be very cautious for the next week or two until we can determine if there's going to be any further impact from that holiday.
I mean, I think that's helpful information for people to know, that we saw that happen in lots of places across the state, and so that should make us extra cautious as to not think that, because it may be obscuring what's really going on. So that's very helpful to know. There's also, apart from the curfew question that the mayor raised, I've also gotten questions about how we, whether there is a chunk of the problem coming from, although bars have been closed, that there are some number of bars that may be selling a small amount of food, but that reportedly really continue to function as bars with people dancing or being close together or not wearing masks in a bar environment. I don't know if there has been any further action taken to address that issue, or if that may be something we have to do if things get worse, but can y'all speak to on top of the curfew question, whether we're seeing any significant number of cases coming from people gathering at what is essentially a bar?
We certainly are seeing cases associated with restaurants, which is what these bars are now classified as. But as Director Hayden said, we have seen significant issues with compliance at some of those sites. At a spot check on Saturday, compliance was 60%. There were a number of citations issued, and I want to be very clear, to restaurants and former bars that are now restaurants, if they do not clean things up, if they do not show a pattern of compliance, we will take further action, including closure. We simply cannot tolerate bad behavior at a time when we are really struggling to keep businesses open. We want businesses to be open. We want restaurants to be open, but they have to be responsible in order to stay open, not only for themselves to stay open, but for all restaurants and businesses to stay open. So it really is up to us as a community and up to them as a business community to really enforce themselves and ensure that those bad actors are being called out and held accountable.
Thank you for that, Dr. S. Scott. I think we all agree that we want to get to a place where businesses can stay open and open further. The best way to address that is people following the rules. I also know that it is hard to stay open with the capacity limitations and the other issues, but in part, that's why I'm glad this week we'll be voting on further aid to our small businesses, to the industries that are hurting. That's why I join with Councilmember Alter and the mayor and everyone else around, hoping that the governor spends those billions of dollars to aid people and small businesses that are struggling and to further our public health goals. But at the same time, everyone does need to follow the rules, and it should apply to individuals, just like it applies to those businesses that we're finding are breaking the rules. So thank you.
Thank you. Paige.
Thank you, Mayor. Could one of you speak to any updates on the vaccine trials or any expected timeline of those to roll out and what people in Austin could expect when something is approved? How would people be able to access it? And what kind of triage is there of making sure our healthcare providers have access to it and then our regular residents?
Yes. What we know right now is Pfizer, Moderna, and What we know right now is Pfizer, Moderna, and AstraZeneca are the three vaccines that are moving forward based upon their effective rate. Pfizer and Moderna are actually have applied for the EAU. There is going to be a public meeting that will, you know, review the process for that with the FDA. That is, the goal is for that to be approved. The only reason, based upon information we've received from CDC, that says that a vaccine may not be approved if the risks outweigh the benefits. And so they are going to be going through all of that information. And that is, according to the last information we received, that is slated around sometime like December 10th is what we've been told. Now, that may be subject to change. And so what we've done with the vaccine distribution coalition task force is, is that we've shared with them all of the information that we have thus far. There is still some information that we have not received, and our hope is to receive that after they pass the FDA approval. One of the things that our plan is, is that providers must enroll at the state level to be a provider. And so the city of Austin, right now, we have, for each site, we have four providers kind of within our, you know, city of Austin, for example, because you have to register per location. So we have, like, for example, two shots for TACTS clinics and a mobile team. So each of them have registered with the state. Beyond that, other providers within our community have also registered to provide the vaccines. Later on next year, they are going to be also working with pharmacists. And so it's like your HEB, it's Walgreens, Walmart, Albertsons, et cetera. They're going to be, you know, that widely available, and what we are calling, is calling phase two. So what we're anticipating, the first phase of it, which will happen sometime this month, we don't have a date or time, but that vaccine will be shipped from Pfizer, for example, and it will come straight to the provider. We're understanding that it is first responders, healthcare administrators, you know, people that work in the healthcare field, but we also EMS is on that list as well. And so our hope is, is that there may be some for long-term care as well during the phase one, and then phase two opens up a little broader. And so every month, our hope is, is that we can open up and there'll be more providers in our community that can provide it to everyone. And so that provides kind of a summary to you. S. Scott, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I'll say is that the strategy is really focused on targeting, you know, securing critical infrastructure where we don't have lots of redundancy. And as we've been talking about for months now, we don't have redundancies in terms of healthcare personnel and first responder personnel. So I think the goal is to shore that up and then to also target those who are at the highest risk, so our individuals over the age of 65 and those with high-risk conditions. You know, basically, the younger and the healthier that you are, the longer timeline it's going to be for vaccination being offered. And that makes sense, but, you know, that's the reality of the situation. Again, it's a great feat to be in December with this virus identified less than a year ago and to be even talking about a distribution plan for vaccine. So we've got to be patient in terms of the allocation of those vaccines across this community. It's going to take six or nine months for us to hit, you know, have broad penetration of vaccine in our community.
And to that last point, Paige, I think that in the conversations that I've seen these folks having, the estimate for getting it out to people in the community that want it ranges from going into the summer to the fall. And I think that that's real uncertainty.
I certainly appreciate that. I know we're all hoping to get something approved soon so that it could roll out to as many people as possible.
Okay, any other questions before we let these folks go? All right, I'll let you go. Director Hayden and Dr. S. Scott, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Spencer, did you have anything else on this?
No, just really appreciate the work of our entire staff, the partners that we cooperate and collaborate with, and most importantly, the support and guidance from this council. It is critical that we're all on the same page as we continue to battle this pandemic. So thank you.
Great, okay.